Hey everybody, welcome back. It's Tuesday night, 6:30 here on our wonderful Bible study in the Book of Joshua. We are in session number 21 and we want to say thank you so much for joining us tonight. We are super excited to pick back up the topic of the fig tree generation, talking about Israel and the movements of Israel and the nations today and through biblical prophecy. So if you're joining us for the first time, welcome. You can go to our website, whitestonechurchtx.com. There in the video toolbar, click on videos, go down, you can get our notes for tonight. It'll be part 21 and this will be the final study in the Book of Joshua. We'll continue next week, but we're gonna start a new study in the Book of Daniel and we're gonna specifically zero in on the end time prophecy and the movements of nations and what's happening in the world today. And so we're gonna tie that into the last part of our Joshua study. So again, go to our website, whitestonechurchtx.com, go to the video dropdown. You can, you can download, print the PDF for our notes tonight. Also, if you'd like to give us your address, your email address, go to the contact us toolbar and we'll be happy to email them to you. Every Tuesday, my dad is very faithful to send that email out to, to a lot of different people. And so, hey, God bless you. Grab your Bible, grab something to write with, grab your notes. I want you to dig into Scripture. I want you to dig into what God is saying. And so let's pray as we start tonight and we'll, we'll dive in. So Father God, we love you and God, we bless you and God, we ask for your peace and Holy Spirit that you would formulate this study, our words, our ideas and our opinions in Jesus' name, amen. Hey, one last announcement, on these second to last page of your notes, if you have some questions during our Bible study tonight, while we're live here at 6:30, you can post those on the toolbar or on the, you can post your questions on Facebook. You can also email them. I've given you my email address here. And if we can't get to them online, we'll answer them during the week. But if you have some questions, if, if during the study, something, you know, clicks and you say, man, what, what is that? Or have this question, sometimes those questions are best answered quickly before we forget them. So if you have any questions, send those. I'll periodically check my email during our study and Stacy will be monitoring our posts. And so let's dive in. Want to dive into a recap, on page one of your notes, we're at the end of the Book of Joshua. So basically from, from chapter 14 up till about chapter 20 is the, is the dividing of the territory and the land. So we're not gonna dive into that, but the 12 tribes of Israel were given different segments of the promised land that the people of God conquered through Joshua's leadership. When we get to chapter 21, Joshua gives a final, a final reminder and urging to Israel, the nation, to follow God's law, to trust God, to, to bless God, to honor God and to not mingle with the other inhabitants outside of Israel, outside of the Jewish nation. And so when we look at the promised land that Joshua conquered, that promised land is still the exact same territory that Israel is in today. In 1948, when Israel became a nation, they were given the promised land that God gave them back in the Book of Joshua. So when we really put those two together, for over 2,000 years, the Jewish people have been in what's called the desporia. And the desporia is when God scattered them, to push them out of their homeland and they've been scattered around the world for the last 2,000 years or so. And in 1948, less than 100 years ago, God gave them their nation back, gave them their territory. Now this same territory that they inhabit today was given to them over 3,500 years ago in the time of Joshua. So around five, around 1,500 B.C., Joshua and the Israelites leave Egypt and they go and they take and conquer the promised land. They are in this promised land until about 70 A.D., when Rome destroys Israel and they are dispersed. And now some of them have lived around and in that same area, but they've been slaves, they didn't have a nation. And so now today, they're back as a people group for the last 70 to 80 years in this promised land. So let's look at a map of today and let's look at the Scripture that is the same territory. Now this same territory is under dispute today. We see the dispute over the promised land. We see the Jewish people, the nation of Israel, surrounded by countries that hate them, surrounded by people groups that would love nothing more than annihilate them. The reason being is that Satan wants to inhabit that promised land again. He does not want God's people to have God's territory. He does not want this nation, physical land, this physical space to be inhabited by God's people. This very space will be the conflict of the Battle of Armageddon. This very space will be this very nation, this very promised land is what we see in the Book of Revelation, when all the nations of the world will attack Israel. They will be led under the leadership of the Antichrist, which is basically Satan himself in human form, and they will all attack Israel, but Jesus Christ and His heavenly host will protect Israel until the Battle of Armageddon, when Jesus Christ comes and judges the world. Now, when He comes back and He judges the nations, He will judge you and I, He will judge territories, He will judge Israel, He will judge the world and people that are for Him and people that are against Him will be judged. So what, what I'm getting at is this, as we study the Book of Joshua, let's look forward also in prophecy and see that this very territory is the battleground for the end time. It's also the very territory for the millennial reign of Jesus Christ. If we think about the life of Jesus, Israel, Jerusalem, this is the place of His death. This is the place of His burial. This is the place of His birth. This is the place of His miracles. This is, this is His homeland, if you will, His home territory on earth. When Jesus ascended, He said, listen, just as you've seen me ascend, you'll see me descend back to this exact territory. As much as you may like Texas, as much as you may like Austin, Texas, this is not the promised land. This is not where Jesus will set up His earthly reign. Jesus will set up His earthly reign, His earthly temple, His earthly kingdom in Israel. Now, there's contention on where will the temple be built? Where is the temple ground? Is it at the Dome of the Rock? You know, where is this special territory that the Jews will rebuild their temple? But that's set aside. When Jesus comes to rule and set up a physical earthly kingdom, He will do it in this promised land. So this promised land has been under contention since before the flood, specifically after the flood, and will be in great content, contention today and in the future. So when we look at Joshua, chapter 23, there on the front page of your notes, Joshua is about to die. They are at, no longer at war. They have divvied up the land, the inheritance to the different nations. He says what God told him in Joshua, chapter one. He says to God's people, be very strong and therefore be very strong to keep and to do all that is written in the book of the law of Moses, the Torah, the first five books. Joshua's the sixth book. So he's referencing, hey, listen, remember to do what's in the Torah, remember the Torah. Now as Christians, we may go, oh, I don't understand the Torah. It's the first five books of the Bible. If you don't read any parts of the Bible, read the first five books. That's what we need. Moses, remember to keep the book or the law of Moses, turning aside neither to the right nor to the left, that you may not mix with these nations. What's he talking about? Hey, listen, we just drove these nations out. We just conquered them. Don't mix with these nations. That's not just marriage. That's not just business dealings. This is, here's what he's getting at. Don't mix with these nations, remaining among you or make mention of the names of their gods or swear by them or serve or bow down to them. Joshua is making it very clear, all through Scripture, when God says, don't marry outside of, outside of your, your people group, that wasn't a race issue. That wasn't a black, white, Asian, Hispanic. That was a, don't bow down to the gods, don't serve the gods. Hey, listen, if you start to marry your sons off to the daughters of that nation and that tribe that worshiped that pagan god, it won't be long till your people, God's people, the ones that I rescued from Egypt, I rescued from those false gods, it won't be long till you start to worship them again. So most, or Joshua's very clear. Look at verse nine. For the Lord has driven out before you great and strong nations. Now, verse nine is still happening today. The Lord is driving away from Israel today, strong nations. We look back at the Six Day War in 1967, where, when Israel got back, the capital city of Jerusalem. Egypt is against them. Syria is against them. All the nations in the Middle East should have easily annihilated Israel. But God miraculously protects them. He drove those nations out. Just to put it in perspective, it would be like the entire United States, all the 50 states that are connected here, all the 50 states going against Kansas. This little state in the middle of America that doesn't have any, any real natural protection as far as mountain ranges and oceans and bears. It would be like everybody saying, hey, let's all gather together and let's attack and destroy and take over Kansas and divvy up Kansas between the, the rest of the 50, the, the rest of the, the states. And, and, and us not being able to do that, we would be so frustrated with the fact that we couldn't annihilate this little state as joining the forces. That's the frustration in the Middle East today. The, the non-godly, the non-Christian, these pagan nations that are against Israel, they are worshiping false gods and they cannot understand how the God of Israel continues to protect them. That's verse nine. Verse 10, one man puts to flight a thousand, since it is the Lord, your God, who fights for you just as He promised you. Joshua is reminding the people, God fights for them. Joshua 24:14, it says, last effort. You've heard this, this passage probably many a times. He says, now therefore fear the Lord and serve Him in sincerity and faithfulness. Joshua 24:14, put away the gods of your fathers that they served beyond the river and in Egypt and they serve, and serve the Lord. Cameron, Whitestone Church, America, if it's evil in your eyes to serve the Lord, then choose this day whom you'll serve. Hey, listen, if God's rules and regulations are too stringent for you, then don't serve them. Go serve something else. If, if the Ten Commandments are too hard for you, if God's law is too much for you, if God's rules and, and, and lifestyle and His morals and His ethics and His way to heaven, if it's too much for you, then go choose who you're gonna serve. But as for me and my house, we will serve the Lord. Basically Joshua's saying, draw a line, pick a side, serve your God and move on. So what's that have to do with today? This is, oh, let, look at one last segment about Joshua. Go to verse 19. If you were, he, he basically has this dialogue with his people that says this, hey, you are not able to serve the Lord. He is holy. He is jealous. He will not forgive your transgression or your sins if you forsake Him and serve foreign gods, then He will turn and do harm and consume you after having done good. And the people say, no, we will serve the Lord. Then he, last, last statement, he says, then put away foreign gods that are among you and incline your heart to the Lord, God of Israel. Joshua has a yearning for his people to put away idols, to put away false gods. The same yearning is today, that we as Christ followers put away false idols. We put away perversion. We put away things that we would worship, whether it was money, entertainment, greed, power, control, security. Whatever those things are, we need to put those things away and remember who we serve, who do we choose to serve? Now what does that have to do with today and the fig tree generation? I want us to go to Luke, chapter 21. So turn there in your Bible and I want, I want us to go back to when Jesus is talking about the fig tree generation. He's talking about warnings to His return. And he says this in Luke, chapter 21, starting in verse 29. Now to set this up one more time, Jesus is talking to His 12 disciples. His 12 disciples say, hey, Jesus, when will, when will you return and when will the world end? What's the, when is judgment gonna happen? When are you gonna set up your kingdom? So he starts to tell them, hey, listen, you'll hear wars and rumors of wars. You'll see nation rise against nation, kingdom against kingdom. Jesus starts to paint this supernatural battle and physical battle at the same time. He starts to paint pictures of, of demons and fallen angels warring against the kingdom of heaven. And he starts to put up earthly, earthly calamity, earthquakes and fires and, and natural disasters combined with kings fighting other kings, nations fighting other nations. He, he starts to list that, hey, lawlessness abounds, people's hearts will grow cold. It's gonna be like a woman that is travailing with a baby. You'll see the intensity of those birth pains, the closer it gets to the day of birth. So Jesus says all this stuff in the beginning of Matthew 24, Matthew 25, Luke 21. It's recorded again in the Book of Mark. But in Luke 21, he says this, he says, hey, listen, learn this parable, verse 29. And he spoke to them a parable. Look at the fig tree and all the trees. When they are ready, when they are already budding, you see and know for yourselves that summer is now near. So you likewise, when you see these things happening, know that the kingdom of God is near. Assuredly I say to you, this generation by no means will pass away till all these things are fulfilled. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my word will by no means pass away. So in Matthew, Jesus says, learn this parable of the fig tree. In Luke 21, he says the same parable, but he adds, Luke records one little statement that Matthew doesn't record. And that's why I picked Luke, chapter 21 for this. But when we hear from Jesus, learn the parable of the fig tree. He wasn't just trying to give us a, a lesson on, on nature and, and agriculture and the growth of trees and, and seasonal fruit, you know, production and these things. He's saying, watch the fig tree. Now the fig tree, all through Scripture, represents Israel. So in your notes, put fig tree equals Israel. When Jesus is talking about fig trees in the Bible, he, he, he's making a reference to the nation of Israel. We see a lot of trees in Scripture. We see from the beginning of Genesis, the tree of life and then another tree of good and evil. In Psalms 1, Jesus says, Psalms records, be like a tree planted, be, be a pillar in the house of God. Trees are mentioned all through Scripture of being these strong places of shelter and, and, and provision. Revelation, the end of the book, talks about the leaves of the trees of life bringing healing to the nations or to the people. When Jesus talks about the fig tree, he is talking about the nation of Israel. Now look at, look at Luke, chapter 21, verse 29. And he spoke to them a parable. Look at the fig tree. And then he says these next four little words, and all the trees. Now that, and all the trees, if the fig tree represents the nation of Israel, the other trees represent other nations. Now, when we look back at Joshua and the Battle of the Promised Land, Israel was a nation and they are going to battle against all these other nations that have planted themselves in the promised land. When they plant themselves, they're like trees. Jesus says to be a tree planted, to, to plant yourself by the river, to, to have a good source of life. When, when we read about other nations, we know that other nations are not holy nations. They're not God's nation. They're other trees or other nations that are trying to plant in the promised land. Or they are trying to plant their agenda of the kingdom of darkness. Now what God is saying is, listen, in end time prophecy in 2020, in November of 2020, you need to be watching the fig tree and you need to be watching other nations. Now with that in mind, look at the verse again, verse 30. When they are already budding, you see and know for yourself that summer is now near. When what's budding? When the nations are budding. When the nations are starting to bloom, when the nations are starting to gain power, when the nations are starting to make world decisions, when the nations start to bud, you know that summer is near. So you likewise, when you see these things happening, what things happening? Fig trees budding? No, no, no. When you see the nations budding, when you see the nations budding, not just the fig tree, but the other trees, you know the kingdom of God is near. Assuredly I say to you, that this generation will by no means pass away till all things are fulfilled. Now we are getting into prophetic eschatology. We're getting into the study of end times. We are getting into what we need to be able to look at the newspaper, watch the news and see the movement of these nations. So I want to specifically talk about some of the nations that are not the fig tree. So on your paperwork, it says, all the trees. It says, watch the trees of prophecy. Trees represent other nations. Nations always started in the Bible as a person or people. So when the Bible says nations, it doesn't just mean a physical territory on a map and a, a German, a nation of Germans or a nation of Russians or a nation of Chinese or a nation of, of, of Americans. It, it doesn't mean just a, a physical territory on a map and, and this is a lot of people in their nation. This is a small nation. Nations in the Bible always started with one person. So for example, I put Abraham, Genesis 17. Abram falls on his face and God talked to him and he says, behold, my covenant is with you. My covenant is with you and you shall be the father of many nations. No longer shall your name be called Abram, but you shall be called Abraham, for I have made you the father of many nations. So out of Abraham, out of his seed, his children and their children's children and children's children and so forth, will form many nations, not just the nation of Israel, but many nations. So Father Abraham, God is using him. And he says, hey, listen, Abram, you're gonna now be called Abraham and you will be the father of a nation of people, this Jewish people, these Jewish, these, these, this nation of Israel. He says the same thing to Jacob in 32:28. He says, you will no longer be called Jacob, but you will be called Israel, for you have struggled with God and men and have prevailed. We see a guy named Jacob, whose brother's name is Esau, and Jacob becomes the nation Israel. So we get the name Israel from Jacob. God renames Jacob and he's now called Israel. Nations in the Bible started as people. Then they grew their families, then became tribes. And those tribes then became nations or people groups that encompassed or inhabited a large piece of territory, a large piece of territory. So back up at all the trees. Trees represent nations. Nations start as people. When the Scriptures say nations, it does not necessarily indicate physical territory. Sometimes it is talking about a territory, but it's also talking about nations. For example, and this was enlightening to me, when Jesus says, hey, listen, at the end times, I'm gonna call the nations and I'll separate the sheep nations from the goat nations. He's not saying all Americans will go to heaven and, and I'm just picking a nation and all Haitians will, will be goat nations or, or all, all Americans are goats and all Russians are, are sheep. He, he's not saying that the entire nation of Iran or the entire nation of, of India or the entire nation of some people group around the world is sheep or goat. He's looking at you and he says, you're a nation. You represent a nation. And it's either holy or it's unholy. You either represent God's nation of God's chosen people or you represent a pagan deity and that pagan nation is, is who you've given your allegiance to. We know this based on the Book of Joshua in Joshua 5. Remember, we studied when Joshua meets Jesus at Joshua, in Joshua, chapter 5, the very last few verses, right before the Battle of Jericho, Joshua meets Jesus. And he says, hey, man, whose side are you on? He says, I'm not on either anybody's side. You need to bow down and worship because you're on holy ground. You remember that? Well, we saw in that, that prime example, that yes, they're going to war against Jericho, but anybody in Jericho that would give their allegiance to God, he would rescue them. So he wasn't against all Jerichoans. He was against those that chose the pagan deity. So he saves Rahab and her whole family. And then we see that there is in the camp of the Jewish people, the guy at the Battle of Ai, Ai, who hides all the stuff, all the, all the gold and the deities. And he, and he says, hey, listen, you're, just because you're Jewish doesn't mean you're for me. You've chosen the other side. So now therefore you are gonna die and your whole family. So when it talks about nations in the Bible, that the leaves are for the healing of the nations, he is talking about you because you represent a nation. In the Bible, these men represent a nation. Now here's where we're gonna dive into tonight, modern day nations in the Old Testament. When we look at a map today, and I'm not great at my geography. I am not a, a student of, of world movement and governments, but I am pledging this and I want to ask you to, to pledge the same. And my wife has pushed me in this direction. I think it is time that we become very aware of governmental movements as of today. You may look back and say, you know, I don't really watch what's going on over there because it's, it's just all confusing and it doesn't impact my daily life. I don't really care what the UN does. I don't really care what's happening in Syria. I don't really care what's happening in Zambia, Africa or Honduras. It, it does impact us. So what's happening in Syria is impacting the church to a dramatic level today because Muslims are invading Christian villages and Christian families and persecuting them, putting them to death by the thousands in the year 2020. Not five years ago, no, right now, today, if you're a Christian in the nation of Syria, you're under great tyranny of radical Islamist that are killing you unless you are killing your children or your spouse in front of you unless you denounce Jesus Christ and accept Islam. That's real. We need to be aware of that. We need to see what's happening in the United Nations. We need to be extremely aware of how our government, the United States, interacts with Israel. It is very much our business if we are pro-Israel or against Israel. Just a side note, God says all through His Bible, if you bless Israel, I'll bless you. You curse Israel, I'll curse you. It's cut and dry. If we curse Israel or don't support Israel, then we're in major trouble. Our current president, Donald Trump, has been a strong ally of Israel. And we see that in, in how God is blessing us, not just in money, but in, in, in the world. God is using us. So we pray, regardless of who the next president is, we pray that our ally or that our unity with Israel remains strong. And we as Americans have to fight for that and have to push for that. But in this study, I want us to start to watch the other trees. Sometimes when we read the fig tree generation, we only watch Israel. But I want us to start watching all the nations that surround Israel and all the nations around the world and what is their stance on Israel. As these nations start to bud, that is a signal, that is a sign of the return of Christ. So let's dive in to some nations that we know today, like Lebanon, Iraq, Jordan, Iran. These are all mentioned, all through Scripture. Russia is mentioned in Scripture. America, not so much. But these nations here are all in the Old Testament. For example, the, the nation of Jordan today is the nation in the Bible called the, from Moab or the Moabites. They, the Moabites in your Bible, Moab is the son of, oh, okay. So as I'm talking about this, the last page of your notes tonight, I put this long chart of genealogy. So for example, when we talk about Moab, you could follow this genealogy chart all the way down. Moab is the son born to Lot. Now I just put that on there to show the history in the Bible of where these different nations come from. Now, I just put that on there to show the history in the Bible of where these different nations come from. They didn't just wake up and pick a name and and say, hey, we're gonna be called the Moabites. Moab was the son born to Lot after he was rescued from Sodom and Gomorrah. And his his son, one of them was called Moab. And so the Moabites were a people group that started as a person. As he got married and he started to have a family, they became a tribe. And whether they followed God or not is irrelevant from who their parents were, or who their father was. What happened, what they did on their own was their choice, so just because they were born from somebody that was holy, doesn't mean that that people group, that tribe, that future nation followed God. So modern day Jordan is is a is a conglomeration of three different tribes. And we'll come back to the genealogy chart in a minute. So when we look at Jordan today, Jordan basically comes from Moab, uh the Ammonites and the Edomites. So today, the 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 capital nation of Jordan is Imam. Uh uh um and that is where we get the uh Ammonites or Am uh the Ammonites. The Edomites also are part uh are now in Jordan, so when we look at Jordan today on the map and we read in the news of what's going on in Jordan. We need to understand that those are three different people groups that come from the Old Testament, that come from the Bible. And they have end time significance, and we're gonna read about that in a minute. The next one that will really zero in on tonight is the nation of Iran. Iran in scripture is the oldest nation that has the oldest heritage, it goes all the way back to Noah's son Shem. Shem had, I think, five children, and his firstborn was a son named Elam, E L A M, it's there on your paper. Uh Iran, Elam, the person, had a family, became a tribe, and then became a nation. As as his sons and his grandsons and their grandsons and and on down the line, they became the nation of Elam. Which also is known as Persia. So when we read about Persia all through the Old Testament, Persia is modern day Iran. Iran got its name in nineteen thirty-five, in nineteen thirty-four, it was known as Persia. In nineteen thirty-five, the Shah of Iran changed the name from Persia to Iran. So when we look at Iran and we look at, uh uh we'll talk a little bit about Ayatollah Khomeini and Iraqi Demjan and 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 nuclear war in Iran, but when we listen to Iran on the world map today. We need to realize all through scripture, that's that's Elam and that's Persia. So we could see how those nations interacted with God's nation all through scripture. So when it talks about the fig tree generation, and it says other trees are budding. We're gonna look at that and see how these nations have bud. Let's, let me stop cuz I'm getting ahead of myself, we're gonna come back to this, let's go to our chart in the back of your your notes. And uh it's titled the end of days, and this chart uh is a genealogy chart, I just got this offline. Um it was one of the best ones that I could find, it was, it's pretty exhaustive. But on your chart, at the top left-hand corner, it says Noah. So when Noah gets off the ark, he has three sons that are on the ark with him, Ham, Japheth, and Shem. Ham does not follow the Lord, Ham is the one that that perverts his father's uh household. Uh Ham uh Ham doesn't follow the Lord. Japheth, Shem is the son where we get Jesus Christ, the lineage to Gen- Jesus Christ. So on your paper, it's gonna start with Shem at the top, Shem's firstborn is a guy named Elam. Then he has Assur, Araxbad, Lud, and Arum. Araxid has a son named Salah, who has a son named Eber, or Eber, who has a son named Peleg. Rue, Sarug, Neor, and then Teira. When you get down, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven generations, you have the son, you have the son named Teira. Teira is is Shem's seventh or eighth generation grandson. Then when you look at Teira's children, this is where we get Abram, Teira has a son named Haran. Nahor and and uh Abraham. And uh so as you look at your chart, you could see that Haran has a son named Lot. Who is Abraham's nephew, and Lot has a son named Moab, uh and then Benamin, I can't say that one, but the Ammonites, so the Moabites and the Ammonites come from this this lineage. Now you may say, hey, what are we talking about all this for? I just wanna list out for you that down through the lineage, all the way to Abraham, we see Abraham has a son named Isaac, who has a son named Jacob, who that is where the twelve tribes of Israel come from. So this is just something that you can look at as you start to figure out where do these people groups come from. So we'll go back to our notes, uh page two and all these trees. So actually, let's go to page three in your notes. Page three, where at the top it says Jordan and Elam. When we look at modern day territories today, I want us to start to watch these trees bud. Now here's where it gets exciting, um oh, we just talked about Shem's son, so. All right, one more page, go to this one, judgment for me, um. When we look at movement today. Down at the bottom of page four, uh we're gonna see how the Middle East kinda came came on the scene in the early nineteen hundreds. Pre nineteen hundreds, the Middle East really was not the world uh dictators, they weren't, they weren't on the front page of the news every day. Uh we didn't really, uh we we did not have an Iran and Iraq as far as what we know them today. Uh prior to the early nineteen hundreds, the Middle East was really just desert. Uh there wasn't much going on from a world scene. What put the Middle East on the map was World War One. The Middle East was ruled by the Ottoman Empire up until the early nineteen hundreds. World War One, the Ottoman Empire joined forces or an alliance with Germany. At the end of World War One, uh Germany and its allies are destroyed, and the Middle East is now out from underneath the Ottoman Empire rule and reign. So now these territories physically are divvied up by Europe. So Iraq and Iran and these and and Syria and uh Lebanon, these and and Jordan, and all these different nations started to get their territories, they started to say, hey. Here's your, here's your lines, here's where you can, your people can live, so they started to become independent uh nations, if you will, not ruled by one Ottoman Empire or one unified force anymore. The second thing that kinda put the Middle East on the map at that time was this discovery and this need for oil or petroleum. So all of a sudden, the Middle East has become very rich because of the petroleum that now the world needs to fuel its vehicles and and different engines. But the third biggest thing that put the Middle East on the map as far as worldwide concern was in nineteen forty-eight, at the end of the Second World War, when Israel is become becomes a nation. At that moment, we see the budding of these nations, we start to see what is now called Iran, what is now called Iraq, what is now called Syria, what is now called well, Egypt has always been Egypt, but what is called the Jordan, and now now we see this this piece of property given to the Jews, to Israel. So in nineteen forty-eight and in the thirties and the forties, we start to see these other trees and the fig trees start to bud. Things go somewhat peaceful for about twenty years. After about twenty years, all these nations around Israel have had it. They say at the Six Day War in nineteen sixty-seven, let's invade this territory, let's get rid of these people. That's the Six Day War, where against all impossible odds, God protects the Israelites. So we start to see the budding of these nations. Now, I want us to go back to the top of our page, under judgment of Moab and Jordan. And let's turn to Jeremiah chapter forty-nine, verse thirty-four. And I want us to read in scripture how God predicted the fall and the decline of this specific nation, but predominantly this this part of the world. And then the resurgence of this part of the world and how that has to do with end time prophecy. Jeremiah forty-nine, ch- uh chapter forty-nine, verse thirty-four. The word of the Lord that came to Jeremiah the prophet concerning Elam. Now Elam is what? Iran. The thus says the Lord a host, behold, I will break the bow of Elam, Persia. The main state of their might, and I will bring upon Elam the four winds from the four quarters of heaven. And I will scatter them to all those winds, and there will be no nation to which those driven out of Persia or Elam or Iran shall not come. I will terrify Elam before their enemies and before those who seek their life. I will bring disaster upon them, and my fierce anger declares the Lord. I will send the sword after them until I have consumed them. And I will set my throne in Elam and destroy their kings and officials, declares the Lord. Now verse thirty-nine, so what we just read in Jeremiah, God, five hundred years before the birth of Christ is pronouncing judgment on Persia, he's announcing judgment, now not to go into, but but Daniel and and Persia is ruling the world at this time, when Daniel, one of the Hebrew slaves is living in Babylon. Persia, uh we'll talk later about the prince of Persia. Uh but this this force is quote-unquote ruling the the world, a- and and so God is announcing their destruction. Uh we're gonna, you know, around this time, we have uh the Persh uh uh the Medo Persian Empire. We have Alexander the Great starts to rule the world, uh and then Rome gets on the scene, so this is God's announcement that, hey, this nation that has taken over and taken the Jews captive, I'm gonna, I'm gonna decimate them. Now, this happens, the decimation of Persia, Iran, Elam, this is like five hundred years before the birth of Christ. Now, here's where, I I know I'm saying a lot, I really want you to to grasp this. Five hundred years before Christ's birth, this nation is destroyed, it's scattered, uh all this comes true. From five hundred to around nineteen hundred, almost twenty-four hundred years. There's not much going on in this nation, there this nation is just kinda has been nation. But here, look at your, look at this prophecy. Jeremiah forty-nine, verse thirty-nine. But in the latter days, so take your pen, take your highlighter, circle in the latter days. I will restore the fortunes of Elam, declares the Lord. In the latter days, I will restore the fortunes of Persia, declares the Lord. In the latter days, I will restore the fortunes of Iran, declares the Lord. Well, when were those fortunes discovered? They weren't discovered in the seventeen hundreds cuz we didn't need oil, we didn't need petroleum in seventeen hundreds. They started to discover this at the turn of the century, and all of a sudden this Middle Eastern country, along with all of them, start to become extremely valuable. And they start to form themselves and gather themselves and start to regroup themselves, they start to bud. Please tie this together. The fig tree nation starts to bud and these other nations start to bud. I'm gonna look at my phone and and see if I got any questions coming in, feel free to send them to me if you choose. And um and you can, and I'll try to answer them. Look, look at the top of your page, under the judgment of Moab and Jordan. Jeremiah forty-eight, forty-six. Now remember, the Moabites or Moab is the current nation of Jordan or or uh of Jordan today. Woe do you, Moab, the people of Shamash, you're undone, for your sons have been taken captives and your daughters have been taken captives. Now, the same thing is happening on this nation of Jordan that that they're under judgment, but look at verse forty-seven. Yet I will restore the fortunes of Moab, or Jord- Jordan, or Jordanians. Moab, Edomites, and A- Ammonites, I will restore the fortunes in the latter days, declares the Lord. So again, judgment, or or thus far, that is the judgment on Moab. What God's telling us prophetically is that, hey, listen, in the latter days. Not just in Acts two, when it says, in the later day, in the latter days, I will pour out my spirit, your sons will prophesy. Your daughters will prophesy, yes, the 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 sun or the moon will turn to blood, all these things. But he's also saying, watch these other trees, watch what's happening to Israel. But hey, Cameron, pay attention to Iran, pay attention to Jordan, pay attention to Syria, pay attention to Russia. Pay attention to the United Nations, pay attention to these other trees, because as they start to bud. My return is very near. The return of Christ is going to be manifest in the governmental movements of the world. I hope that we're seeing that, look down at the bottom of your page, uh Iran, Islam, Middle East today. Iran has a a deep passion for nuclear power. Uh despite UN regulations, despite their promises. Uh Iran is and will be a nuclear threat, a nuclear power that we have to uh uh be aware of. Um the Muslims today, whether they are quote-unquote radical Muslims, uh uh Islam uh or whether they are non-radical, um there's a great push to declare that Islam uh or the Muslim religion is a peaceful religion. Um it it didn't start that way, it's not gonna end that way. Um there are peaceful Muslims, there are peaceful people, there not all Muslims are radical, not all Muslims are are uh uh declaring jihad and and but there is a contingency that will not settle until they rule the world, until they take over the world. And here's how we need to respond to that, we need to respond knowing that Muslims are waiting for the twelfth Imam, the Mahidi. They are waiting for them as we are waiting the Messiah. As you and I are waiting on the return of Christ, they are waiting on the return of the uh of of their twelfth Imam, their Messiah. Um the uh Jihad uh is a war by Muslims against unbelievers or their enemies. Uh or infidels carried out as a religious duty. Nine eleven in America came from the Middle East, uh regardless of what you think about that. The battles that we're fighting on the earth are not just physical battles, but they're spiritual battles. That's what Jesus is meaning by wars and rumors of wars. Nation against nation, um kingdom against kingdom. One of the things that I became very aware of a few years ago, and I do have a couple of questions, I'll answer them in just a minute. One of the things I came very aware of a few years ago, uh even though some of these presidents and players have changed. Um but but look at your, um just just go back to like two thousand thirteen, when Hugo Chavez stood at the United Nations. Uh George, George Bush uh is uh um you know, I may have my date off. But Hugo Chavez basically calls George, he says, hey, listen, the devil visited the UN today, the stench of hell is still rum- ruminating uh in the in the room bec- uh because of George Bush's uh uh speech. Hugo Chavez, um uh Kim Jong-un, North Korea, Cuba, Russia, Iran. These these groups, they all have one thing in common, it's not politics, it's not money, it's not language, it's not religion. They have a hatred for the Jewish people, they have a hatred for the Jewish allies. Um this is not on the surface in their religion, but it's underneath the surface of the agenda of Satan and his religion, regardless of how we manifest that. Um watching the Middle East today, uh uh it's, we need to pay attention to what Trump uh President Trump has done uh with oil in the Middle East, trying to relinquish that stronghold uh around the world. Um let me take these questions and I'll and I'll get up to my uh kinda back to some of my points, um. One of the questions coming across is, what it, where is the best place to watch and be aware of these other trees or nations? Uh um the UN, uh I I guess I'm interpreting what's the best place to get your news? Um that's a tricky one, we do need to realize in America that about eighty to ninety percent of our news outlets are all ruled by a very, very, very small group of people. that about eighty to ninety percent of our news outlets are all ruled by a very, very, very small group of people that just want us to get information. Uh that is true with Google. Uh we need to be very careful. Just because you Google it doesn't mean that it has not already been censored or the search will only produce what somebody else wants you to get. Um my favorite uh news outlet is the Epoch Times or Epoch Times, E.P.O.C.H. That's my personal favorite. Um but I think you could watch any news source and start to watch with a, a biblical perspective of what's happening. So I think it could easily start with us just watching the movements, what, what kind of, what kind of rules and regulations, what kind of legislation or or laws are being passed? What kind of funding is being given or taken away from Israel from an American perspective? What is uh, what is the president of Venezuela saying about Israel today? What is the president? Uh the, you know, what's the prime min- minister uh Netanyahu? Who, who is he meeting with? I, I don't know exactly, but I think we could, regardless of our news source, we can start to watch what's happening and put that through the lens of, of biblical um understanding, just saying, well, it, it doesn't matter to me, it does matter. I, I don't think I answered that question very well, but that, that's kind of my best answer. Um was the Islamic belief generated from Jewish people? Um Islam, um was the, was Islam generated from the Jewish people? No, uh uh Mohammed uh is the founder of Islam. Mohammed um is uh you know, from a biblical genealogy is the offspring of Ishmael. Uh Ishmael is, is the son of, of Abraham with his uh maid servant Hagar. Uh and God promises in the Bible to protect Ishmael and not to shun him. But Ishmael was um was a man of, of war and and uh and like, you know, uh I, I don't have a lot to, I don't wanna, I don't wanna just speak. I don't have a lot of uh understanding of exactly about Ishmael, but I do know this. Islam was started by Mohammed. Uh Mohammed lived to be about sixty-two years of age. Uh he wrote the Quran. Uh uh Mohammed started to lead uh people to his way of life, his belief. Uh he believed that angel, that the angel Gabriel uh would re- revealed to him through many uh visitations and dreams, the, the Quran. Um this, he, he would go into the cave for a notorious three days. Um uh he did not write the entire Quran. I have said that before and and I need to correct that. Uh he did take many years to write the Quran. But a lot of people in the beginning did not believe him, they did not follow him, they didn't like his politics, they didn't like his strategy. He would then force his way, he would force uh his beliefs on certain kingdoms or certain villages, I should say. Uh and he started to, to gain momentum uh throughout, throughout uh his lifetime. At his death, a lot of followers started to follow and read the Quran and read uh and follow his, his, take his leadership. Um. So it was not originally, uh ori- I, I do, I do know this. Originally Mohammed thought that the Jewish people would receive his, his uh religion or his belief system. Uh and I think he was shocked that the Christians of the day and the Jews of the day rejected his um uh his belief in the Quran. Um so I think in the beginning, he wanted them or expected them because he speaks a lot about Jesus and uh the connection with Islam and Jesus being a prophet. He's spoken of very highly uh in the Quran, uh but the difference is he's just a prophet in the Quran. And in the Bible, he is God. He is uh the incarnation of God himself. And so um I think that may be kind of where that question stemmed from is that he did believe that the Jews would accept him and they did not, and so therefore much of his beginning uh um dominance was by force, forcing people to accept Islam or uh annihilating them. So I hope that, I hope that, I hope, I hope that answered some of those questions. Um if you have more, please send them to me because I don't feel like I did very good on those two. Um. One of the questions coming in is, why did, why do these nations hate uh Jesus? Why do they hate the Jews so much? Uh it is, it is basically the um uh why do, why do you and I hate God's word? Why do we hate it when God's word convicts us? Because it's our flesh, it's our sin nature that we, we want to reject God. That's why we have to be born again through the blood of Jesus Christ. Um just want to bring this up real quick. Uh I'll, I'll bring up probably the most famous uh thing that's happened in Iran over the last forty or fifty years when the Atoli uh, Atoli uh I can't say it also. Ayatollah Khomeini, thank you. Uh he was a radical Islamist. He opposed the Shah of Iran and was exiled in like nineteen sixty-two. He went to Turkey, France, Italy. Uh he's exiled for like fifteen years. He continued to spread uh through cassettes and books and pamphlets. His uh belief to overthrow the Shah of Iran, that happened in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh that's when uh his followers took over the US Embassy, uh basically declared war on America because that's American soil. They held fifty-two hu- uh people hostage for over four hundred and forty-something days until like nineteen eighty-one, from seventy-nine to eighty-one. That's when we really saw uh this shift in that specific nation that had an intense hatred for America, for Jew, Judaism, uh for God's people uh and made that very, very public. Today, uh here's what's happening with Israel today. Um yes, the Epoch Times is a, Epoch Times is a newspaper uh that you can subscribe to. They also have an online feed. That's just who I like. I'm not, I'm not, you know, s- propagating them. Um let me throw this out with Israel today. In, in about a month ago, in October, the thirteenth, Israel is making a deal with the United Arab Emirates. Uh so as we have the United States of America, there's the United Arab States or Emirates. Uh and so they're making deals with them currently uh for peaceful negotiations with oil and other, other services. Saudi Arabia, who is, who is um long benched again, been against Israel, except for the royal families. Saudi Arabia is now trying to make a deal with Israel. Um no matter what deals are made with Israel, we know that the Antichrist will come in and sever those deals. Um and so we just need to watch as these nations start to bud and we start to see this movement. Uh we do know this according to biblical prophecy that Russia and Iran and Syria, they will invade Israel from the north. They will come against Israel uh uh with, with Ferber. Uh even though today Russia is, is on the surface pro-Israel, uh they would love it if Israel was annihilated. They would love it because at the core of communism is, is anti-Jesus. It's, it's atheistic, uh um it's, it's atheism. And at the core of that is Satan's agenda. So when we don't follow God's word, like Joshua told his people, when we follow some other god, it opens us up to that spiritual battle, whether we understand it, acknowledge it, believe it, or, or follow it. That, that is part of it. Um Revelation nineteen, I want us to think about this as we talk about real physical territory, when Jesus returns, um who's gonna join the Antichrist army? This isn't just gonna be some crazy people. It's going to be people that have a real belief that they can annihilate the Son of God, that they can destroy God and his people. And here's some questions I put on your notes. When Jesus Christ returns in Revelation nineteen and the sword of the Spirit comes out of his mouth, how's he gonna destroy Elam? How, not, and I'm using that word because back, he's gonna go back to the, those nations and says, hey, where was your beginning? Where did you start and how did you deviate? How did you get so far away from where you started? How does God convict our hearts? He uses the word of God to do that. So as we start to look at, at, at governmental movement and we start to look at Israel today, let's realize that the return of Christ is imminent because we start to see the budding, not just as Israel as a nation, as a people group, but we start to see the budding of all these other trees that just less than eighty years ago, less than ninety years ago, they were not influential on the worldwide sea- scene. So if we have any other questions, shoot them to me. Uh we will be back next week uh at six-thirty. We'll pick up here with a study of Daniel. I want to invite you to read the first two chapters of Daniel. I want to invite you to, to look at uh, at what's happening um politically around the world and what's happening with business around the world. Um and I want to remind us of the seven mountains. Uh the seven mountains. So here, write these down. There are seven mountains of influence. When, when the Antichrist comes out of the ocean, uh and the beast is on the scene, he will dominate uh nations and people by seven different levels of influence. One is entertainment, one is science. Uh entertainment would include arts, but, but really, you know, entertainment, wha- whatever we chalk that up to, uh you know, uh uh movies, sports, entertainment, uh science, education, the family, politics, religion, and I'm forgetting, I'm forgetting one of them. Uh uh I should have wrote them down. I wasn't gonna talk about these. But there's seven mountains of influence. So when we're watching different nations, see what are the, uh what's happening in their governmental sphere? What's happening in their education sphere? What's happening with their education? What, what's the education system look like in these different nations? Um is it, is it oppressive or is it, you know, free thinking? What, what's, what's happening in, in our education system? So Stacy will read them off to us in just a minute. What's happening in their entertainment? Uh is the enemy invading through the entertainment? What's happening uh with their military? What's happening with their finances? What's happening with their family values? What's happening with the religious uh uh um mountain? What, what is going on? So when we look at Iran and we look at Iraq, we could say, what unifies them? Well, not just money and business and entertainment and education, religion unifies them. What unifies other nations? Um what unifies them? How, how are they being impacted? The seven mountains or the seven levels of influence, uh is the family mountain? How, how, who's influencing our family? What's happening on the family in this, in this, the smallest part of our, our world? Religion, business, politics, education, media is the one I forgot, media and arts. Uh arts would be entertainment. So what, you know, who, who controls the media in Iran? Who controls uh what is entertainment in Iran? Who controls what is called education? What is business? So when we look at business dealings, uh that's one of the big things with China today. Uh and is China and their business uh is basically like a cartel almost. It's a how can we buy a ninety-nine cent toothbrush? Because they have slave labor making toothbrushes. How can we buy two dollar light bulbs for Christmas to string around our house and our tree because of all the political uh enforced labor in China? Um this is, this is real stuff. And, and how, how does that impact the world? Well, from a business level, China is impacting the world, not with their religion of Buddhism, not with, not, not, not in that arena, not on that mountain, but their, their business is ruling the world. So therefore, one of their play, one of their ace cards uh in their deck is, hey, listen, if you, if you don't negotiate with us, then we'll cut you off from a supply of this product. Uh what, how does that happen with oil? One of the big uh negotiating chips for the Middle East is, hey, listen, if you don't do what we're gonna, you know, the Middle East, um uh there's um uh has happened in influencing Africa. Hey, Africa, uh certain countries in Africa, hey, uh you may be a Christian nation in Africa, but if you don't vote in the UN for our agenda, which would be uh um uh anti-Christian, if you don't vote for us in the UN, in your vote, then we'll cut off your supply of oil. And so it, it, it all of a sudden, we start to see business influencing religion, influencing all these different things that we need to pay attention to. Think we have one last question and we'll
Just clarify what we're starting on next week.
Okay, next week. I appreciate you guys so much. Next week, we're gonna read the first two chapters in Daniel. And uh on the last, the last page, we're gonna just start a new, a new study called The End of Days. And uh as we study the book of Daniel and the end of days, that will take us into a lot of political things that are happening now, a lot of current things that are, that are moving in the world. So I'm gonna write myself a note and next week we'll start with the seven mountains of influence. Um and uh and I'll try to do that more justice. Uh the seven mountains of influence was, was started by a guy named Bill Bright back in the seventies. Uh he was the champion or the forerunner of Campus Crusade for Christ. Uh a gentleman named Lance Wallnau, W.A.L.L.N.A.U. Lance Wallnau has picked up the seven mountain teaching. So if you want to get um acquainted with what are the seven mountains of, of influence, uh when we talk about the Antichrist, he will sit on top of these seven mountains. Uh in other words, he will rule these seven mountains of influence. So when we look at these influences, that's an end time budding, if you will, of these different nations. So when we look at different nations, how are they budding? How are they influencing the world? And what does that have to do with end times? God bless you. Thank you so much for joining us. We'll see you next Tuesday, six-thirty.